Okay, we're good to go.
Okay, all right. I had called the May 11th meeting of the Seattle Planning Commission to order. We'll start the meeting off with some land acknowledgements. On behalf of Seattle Planning Commission, we'd like to actively recognize that we are in an indigenous land. The traditional and current territories of the Coast Alish people who have lived on and steward of these lands since the beginning of time and continue to do so today. We offer land acknowledgement because native land was taken by ports and colonized before the United States as we know it today. Through this process, which is ongoing through systematic oppression, native identity, history, and land ownership have been ignored by colonizers and attempted to be erased. Land acknowledgement is the first step in opposing the systematic oppression and historic erasure of native people and native land ownership. I'm gonna check to see if we have any members of the public or visitors speaking on. Nope. All right, then we'll move on to the color brave space norms up on the screen. I'll ask you to review our revised color brace brave space norms. And I invite a commissioner to choose one to read aloud with a brief note of the relevance of that norm to what we're talking about today. Anybody want to pick one to read? Okay, Rose, why don't you? Oh, sorry, Caleb, did you have your hand up?
Rose can go.
I was gonna get a center reflected indigenous and black expertise nerds enjoy. So I think everything we do is aimed at making the city a better place specifically for indigenous and black folks as well as the rest of us if you don't identify as either. And focusing on joy, because I feel like moving systemic injustices will improve joy.
Agreed. Caleb, if you would, if you don't mind, I'd like for you to go as well.
Sure. I can, I was gonna go with keep focused on our collective goal. Create, create racial justice through black liberation and native sovereignty.
All right, thank you very much. On the agenda today, we have one action item, which is approving the meeting minutes. Two discussion items. One is a briefing from our colleague Dalton Owens on the 2022-2023 Get Engaged cohort. Continued discussion on our draft letter of support for the mayor's proposed housing levy. And discussion of staff proposed frameworks for our review of the draft update to the comp plan as well as the Seattle Transportation Plan and their associated draft environmental impact statements. We will adjourn the meeting at 5:20. For our first action item of approving the minutes, these are the minutes from the April 27th, 2023 meeting. Oh, we don't form, sorry if we didn't reach it, I was supposed to check. How many do we need?
We need nine. Got eight.
We have eight now.
Okay. Do we pick it up at the end of the agenda?
We pick it up at the end of the agenda if we gain one more person, and if not, we just say roll to the next meeting.
Okay. All right. For the chair to report, we have a few announcements on upcoming commission meetings. The Landings and Transportation Committee meeting is on Thursday, May 18th from 7:30 to 9:00 AM. And the meeting will be held online only using the Teams platform. And our next full commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 25th from 7:30 to 9:00 AM, and that meeting will be held both in person and on Teams. Vanessa, do you have some announcements to give?
Just a very few. Hello, everybody. Hello, good afternoon. We don't have any members of the public that I can see, so I'm gonna skip the long version and just give you the brief version. So as you know, we're in a hybrid format meeting. Please use the chat function to be recognized to speak. Please don't put substantive comment in there. Even though we don't have members of the public, not, not everybody is looking at the chat. So best just to keep the conversation of substance vocal so everybody can hear and try not have to multitask. I have not received any public comments, so there's no public comment at the end of the meeting. And just a reminder that we're now recording our missions, our full commission meetings and that those recordings are posted to the website. And they do not replace our minutes, our minutes stand as the record of this meeting. And with that, I'll ask Michaela to start introductions. And then Michaela, if you can call on another commissioner, and then that commissioner will call on another commissioner, and we'll wrap up the staff.
Hey, this is a game and are you paying attention? So Michaela Dotburn, she/her pronouns, I'm co-chair of the Planning Commission. I live in Capitol Hill and I work in affordable housing policy and planning.
Hi, Rose Bluchello, it's in my pronouns, are they that? I live up north in Lipton Springs. And I work as a wetland biologist, project manager, and permitting specialist with Jacobs Engineering. Pass to Caleb.
Hi, my name's Caleb Toolday, he/him pronouns. I live in Columbia City and I work in education at Rainier Scholars. And I will pass the pop to Rocky.
Thank you, Caleb. Rocky Deherer, he/him pronouns, I live in Finney Ridge. I work for a for-profit lender and housing developer, Legacy Group Capital. And I will pass it to Dalton.
Hey, everyone, I'm Dalton Owens, pronouns, he/him. I live in the Ballard neighborhood of Seattle and I work for Venture General Contracting as a project engineer. And I'll pass it off to David. Have you gone?
I have not gone, thanks. David Goldberg, he/him pronouns. I live in the Wallingford Urban Village and I'm the co-chair of the commission with Michaela. And I work for the State Department of Transportation. And I'll pass it to Lauren.
Everyone, Lauren Squires, she/her. I live in the Rainier Valley and I'm a transportation planner at Nelson-Negard. Jamie.
Hi, Jamie Struble, I use she/her pronouns and I live in the future 130th station area. And I work in climate change and environmental justice. And I believe all commissioners have gone unless there's somebody in the room that I don't know about.
Why don't we go to staff? Olivia?
Sure. Hi, everyone, Olivia Baker, I use she/her pronouns and I'm staff to the commission.
Good afternoon, I'm John Hoy. I use he/him pronouns, I'm staff to the Planning Commission.
Vanessa Murdock, I use she/her pronouns, and I too am staff to the commission. Turn it back to Michaela.
Thanks, all. I'm just gonna do a quick introduction of our first briefing. Our colleague and fellow commissioner Dalton Owens is going to brief us on the 2022-2023 Get Engaged cohort, of which he is a member. The Get Engaged program places individuals ages 18 to 29 on the City of Seattle's boards and commissions. Get Engaged board members serve a one-year term as fully vested and voting members starting in September of each year. Started in 2021, Get Engaged is dedicated to cultivating the next generation of leaders and advocating for the influence of young voices in city affairs. As you may have seen from Vanessa's email, applications for the 2023 to 2024 year being accepted until tomorrow, May 12th at 11:59 PM. With that, Dalton, I will turn the floor over to you.
Cool, yeah, thank you for the intro, Michaela. I feel like that sums up kind of my understanding of the program as well. It's been really cool, I've enjoyed it. I think it was a cool way to get involved and kind of meet people, which was a pleasant surprise. Yeah, everyone in the program is between the ages of 18 and 29, so young adults and all kind of trying to figure out our careers, which has been really enjoyable. Yeah, I made this little PDF slide deck, so I'm gonna work my way through it. I'll try to be as concise as possible, there's a lot of information that I kind of word vomited into here. But yeah, let me know if you have any questions. Next slide. Okay, so I'm gonna pretty much skip this one. Michaela, you did a great job, I just pulled the same summary that I believe you read. So that's what Get Engaged is, sponsored by the YMCA. So next slide, I guess. Cool. This one also, you know, pretty straightforward. This was the list of boards and commissions that I guess we're open to taking on a Get Engaged member this year. Put a little heart next to the Planning Commission because, you know, sending y'all love and whatnot, so yeah. Next slide. Okay, so jumping into updates. So it's been super helpful, but during like our monthly meetings, we have a meeting typically on a Wednesday, but once a month from 5:30 to 7:30. They have the option of being in person or you can attend virtually. And they give everyone the space to kind of like give feedback on what they've been working on recently. And we also keep like a little nice Google Doc that summarizes the updates that we provide. So that's kind of what I pulled from today to share with. For the areas that say not available, you know, it's a meeting, so not always the best attendance. So there are a couple of commissions that I haven't heard from since I've been on Get Engaged. So yeah, that's what explains that, I guess. But yeah, so I'll jump into Immigrant and Refugee Commission. So the last I heard from them, they were working on an IRC booth for World Refugee Day. So it sounds like they're gonna do like some sort of pop-up booth in the city of Seattle. I believe the World Refugee Day is sometime within June. So that should be pretty cool, they're putting together a lot of marketing material for it. They're also working on a recruiting campaign. I think this was a popular narrative that I heard from quite a few commissions and boards. But I think we're very lucky that, you know, we always have a decent amount of people that are willing to participate within our commission. However, that doesn't seem to be the case for all the boards and commissions for the city of Seattle. So that was one thing that was noted by the Immigrant and Refugee Commission, but also kind of reigns true for a number of the different commissions or boards, is that they're working on adding people to the board or commission to make sure they have quorum for voting and things of that nature. Community Technology Advisory Board, that's one of the ones I haven't heard from, so nothing to share out there. In regard to the Bicycle Advisory Board, the last thing I heard from them was that they were reviewing the West Marginal Way Southwest Improvement Project. Several members to provide feedback on how to ensure cyclist safety. And then they also were discussing the Vision Zero Project. And if y'all aren't familiar, Vision Zero is like a project that is put in place in the city of Seattle to reduce the amount of traffic deaths in the city to zero by, I'm forgetting the year, but I want to say 2035. So we're gonna throw that one out, please feel free to fact-check me. Yeah. And then next commission, Seattle Human Rights Commission. They also were working on recruitment, working on like what materials they're putting out there to spread the word. I believe they, that was another commission that was struggling with membership right now. Another thing that they were working on, they have a task force called the Criminal Justice Task Force, which always is interesting to hear from. Seems like they do really cool work, but they were working on attending an upcoming hearing from the city and then the CTC, which I believe stands for the, I think it's the Policing Commission. So yeah, they're working on attending a hearing, expressing their word and opinion on human rights and how that needs to be held accountable by the city along with policing in the city. And then next, Community Involvement Commission. Recently, they completed a facilitated norms and decision-making process. So just kind of vetting out what their norms were gonna be in terms of how they would make decisions moving forward. And then, let's see. They were starting to, I think they just began with subcommittees, so that was like a new thing that they added on to the commission. So kind of adding to the workload of those that are on the commission and giving up some of the work. And then they also had recently had a commission, a commissioner appointed, which was a big step because I think they, yeah, another commission that was low-end numbers at the time. So they're happy to find another person to join. Yeah, any questions on those?
I bet.
No, you're all good. Nope, okay, let's just keep pushing then. Go to the next one. Cool. Pedestrian Advisory Board. Seattle Transportation Plan Letter approved to be sent to S.Director and Mayor. So I guess they, yeah, were working on a letter based on the Seattle Transportation Proposed Plan. They recently approved that and they're working on sending that to the Director and Mayor. Letter of Support for Updated Crosswalk Policy to Both Mayor and Crosswalk Engineers. Working on pedestrian and bike combined letter for Vision Zero. I think Vision Zero is getting thrown out around a lot, so a lot of people are kind of putting their eyes on that, which is very cool. Public comment. They had some comment, I guess, that ranged from micro-mobility and its impact on pedestrian safety. Not exactly sure, I remember any more details on that, but just listed it. They also got a presentation from Seattle Transportation Plan just in terms of what they're putting together and the stage at which they are completed. And then Design Review Board, that's another commission I haven't heard from, so nothing to share there. Seattle Arts Commission, they're on the search for a new director of the Office of Arts and Culture. So I think they're supporting that process in terms of marketing and spreading the word with their networks. And let's see. I guess they also were pushing for the mayor to step in in terms of filling vacancies on the commission. But there was a holdup, I think there's like a number of people that were proposed. However, the mayor was not willing to sign off on the proposed people. So I think there was some drama there, won't elaborate too much further, but that was in the works. Seattle LGBTQ Commission, co-chair elections for committees was the last I heard from them. And then they're also working on discussing current Washington state legislation. Yeah, I think that one's a little broad, but yeah, so just working on policy, I guess. Seattle Renters Commission, nothing to share there. Next slide. Okay, Urban Forestry Commission. Oh, there it is. Okay. Urban Forestry Commission, I feel like they always have a lot to share, so I'm gonna slightly glaze through this one. They have quite a few things that they're working on. Provided recommendations to City Council and Mayor about updates to the city's tree protection regulations. Specifically, the desire to see the following items addressed in the ordinance. I'm gonna run through these. Prioritizing environmental and social justice principles that can be tracked with short-term girls, goals. What is the percentage of tree canopy this current administration wants to reach as opposed to the long-term goal of 2037? Strengthening the connections between the ordinance and affordable housing. As is it unclear how the ordinance is supporting affordable housing in the city while we can infer how this is being conducted? Okay, I'm not gonna read all through. Didn't really bet all this for grammar, so don't want to butcher any of it. But I guess this is just kind of a list of the main topics that they want to have addressed and prioritize, so. Yeah, and then, let's see, I'm trying to see if there's anything other major components to mention. Yeah. Okay, we'll just move on. Nothing to share from the Pioneer Square Preservation Board. Yeah. See, I think, did I skip one at the end there? Maybe?
Sorry.
Yeah, no worries. Landmarks Preservation Board, just working on normal business, I guess, is what they had to share last time. I think there were a couple buildings that were in the city of Seattle that they were working on getting added to the preservation board if they aren't already there. That included the Mott Lake Elementary School expansion. So I think there's some work going on at Mott Lake Elementary School and they just want to make sure that they're respecting those like elements of the architectural facade that are protected by the board. Same case for Bressey Garage Development, so I guess tenant improvement slash additions being made there. And then designation of, I don't know how to pronounce it, but Kettleland House. So I believe trying to get that added to the preservation board. Next slide. Cool. And then Seattle Design Commission, they received a briefing recently on street and alley vacation policy and procedures. Five-street and alley vacations are under review currently or in the near future through the commission. They've been, I don't know, they've expressed the fact that they worked pretty hand-in-hand with Sam Transit recently. Discussing a lot about link extension. Yeah, I think the comp plan is just a major topic of discussion there. Yeah. Barfield Superblock Design, I wasn't super familiar with that project, so I, it seems interesting based on what they had to share about it. But I would recommend y'all look into it if you have the free time, it sounded kind of interesting. Moving on to Board of Parks and Recreation, they're on a search for the new director of Office of Arts and Culture as well. So kind of supporting that search through marketing and sharing with their network. Yeah. They also were working on filling some vacancies. Let's see, nothing to share from the Transit Advisory Board. Seattle Women's Commission, Housing Access Subcommittee Update, Beginning Stages of Planning a Community Event that would cover a housing lookback from state legislature and provide information in the lead-up to the upcoming housing levy. Let's see. I'm not sure what the acronym stands for, but reviewing a work plan that was put together by one of their subcommittees. I believe that's in preparation for a day of remembrance that was on the 5th. This is from a couple days ago, so a little outdated there. And yeah, I guess reviewing some internal like handbooks and commission guidelines. With the rest, they have to share, so. Next slide. Yeah, that's all I got, so thanks for listening. I know that was kind of a earful, but tried to convey all that information the best that I could. So feel free to throw out any questions that you might have, I can do my best to answer based on what I've heard, but yeah.
You want me to do, we have a list of people just opened?
I think just open for, because there's no really questions, clarification. So thank, thank you, Dalton, that was great.
I have a question for Dalton. If Get Engaged applications are due at the end of this week, how much longer do we have you?
Oh, yeah, so it runs from September to September.
Okay, so through the summer.
I think I have, yeah, through the summer and then, yeah, applications are due by midnight tomorrow. And then, yeah, I don't know, I'm excited, but also like sad.
Yeah. Well, I won't, I won't start thinking about you leaving yet, but it's really, it's, it's, as a, as a former Get Engaged person, it's one of the rare opportunities that we get visibility across boards and commissions. Like because you're a part of the cohort, it's, it provides so much value to the rest of the commission to be like, oh, what's everyone else working on? So thanks for, thanks for the update.
I have a comment more for, I think, staff than Dalton. I did see in there that the pedestrian commission was writing a comment letter on the Seattle Transportation Plan and that the Seattle Evans Commission was looking to look into the housing levy. Should we try and get a copy of their letters to see?
Definitely, I wrote both of those down.
Okay.
Because that was news to me, so thank you, Dalton, for sharing that information. I'm a little, I'm just interested just to read the pedestrian advisory board's letter on the plan that hasn't come out yet.
Correct.
So curious about that. And really interested to follow up also with the Women's Commission, which I wrote a note to myself. As there, it looks like, from what I saw in Dalton's slide, looks like they're doing some research in order to prepare a letter on the, a letter of, I'm assuming, support for the housing levy. So that's great, so I definitely have those two items on my list of things to follow up. All right, and I'll just jump in and let, sadly, we don't have any members of the public listening, but just to let all the commissioners know that this program, the Get Engaged program, has been just a fabulous program, not only for the participants, that is Lauren mentioned, for, for the commission itself, because we do get to hear from, from our Get Engaged member about what's going on in other boards and commissions. And the commission, the Planning Commission, has benefited greatly from the program. Lauren is an alum, as is Caleb. As is a former chair, Michael Austin, for those of you who might have overlapped with him. He wasn't a Get Engaged member for the Planning Commission, but he was Get Engaged member for the, for a design review board. And then another former chair, Amalia Layton, also started off as a Get Engaged member on the Planning Commission and then served full, two full three-year terms. So we love the program, it's great. So, and I apologize for the delay for the last-minute announcement that I just got to you all yesterday. And I do encourage you just to blast it out to anybody or any groups that you think might be interested in, in applying to the program. And the deadline is tomorrow midnight or a minute before midnight.
All right, any other questions or comments on this agenda item? All right, we will move on to our discussion of the revised draft housing levy letter. Olivia's gonna walk us through the revised letter of support for the mayor's proposed housing levy. This was emailed to commissioners last week. Vanessa, or sorry, Olivia also emailed it again this afternoon right before the meeting, so it should be at the top of your inbox. After Olivia walks us through the letter, I will facilitate our discussion first by asking commissioners for any clarifying questions. If you do not have a question, feel free to pass and I'll circle back to you at the end of the questions portion of the discussion. Following questions will open up the floor to comments. Please note your name and the general topic or issue of your comment in the chat. Vanessa will assist in monitoring the queue and ensuring all commissioners have the opportunity to participate in the discussion. We have 40 minutes for this agenda item. I think I turn it over to you, Olivia.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna talk about some of the edits that the group suggested at the last full commission meeting as well as a few written comments that I received, thank you for sending those, I always appreciate the, the extra notes. And then someone to do a high-level overview of the changes that were made, and then we're gonna do a five-minute review. So if you haven't had the chance to take a look, you can read through it before we jump into discussion. So to start us off, one of the main topics that was discussed at the last full commission meeting was the conversation on whether or not to include a more direct statement in support of increasing the overall levy. And I would say that sort of the crux of that conversation was, yes, let's include more, like a stronger statement in support of increasing the levy. And then a sort of a caveat to that is the second point here, which was if we're going to include that request, then we should have clear reasons as to the why of increasing the levy. So I took the chance to sort of reorganize some of the letter a little bit at the top and break out the main arguments into three more clear buckets. So the arguments in the letter didn't change too much, there was definitely some added, but for the most part, just organized, try to be a little more clear about the points, so there's three main categories. There's a section talking about the scale of need as one of the main reasons. There's a section that talks about the costs and inequitable outcomes of underfunding the levy. And then there's a section that talks about the need to adjust for rising costs. So again, not a ton of new content in those, some new content, but not a ton. But it will look different than it did the last time you looked at it for that reason. And then a few more points that were discussed the last meeting. There was a suggestion that the letter note that there's both social and financial costs to everyone in the city if the city's not providing enough affordable housing. There was a request to recommend increased access to affordable housing for people with disabilities and to note accessibility as one of the reasons why it's a good idea to increase the levy. And there was also a request to note that the city should work to reduce city-driven development costs, especially costs like permitting fees and infrastructure costs for affordable housing. So all of those have been worked into the letter as well as a few smaller sort of like remedial type suggestions that folks made, so those have been worked in. And those are the main changes that you'll see. And then before we go to the five-minute review, I just wanted to kind of go over the timeline to orient you. So we've been talking about the housing levy since early April. We talked about it at a April H&amp;M meeting and then at both the April 13th and 27th full commission meetings. And at the last one, we had a chance to actually look at a full draft. And so today is our last chance to really review and discuss the draft of the letter. So, oh, sorry, my computer's having a moment. Thankfully, it came back. Okay, cool. So today's the last chance really to bring up any changes that you'd like to see or to discuss any questions that you might have, because at the next full commission meeting on May 25th, the goal is to approve the final comment letter and there will really be time at that meeting to take action on it, not to make further changes. So if you have thoughts, please bring them up today. And then you'll see at the bottom, there's a chance to give, for the group to give public comment at the May 31st City Council public hearing. And that's the last public hearing that will happen before City Council's votes on the levy in June. So that's the timeline. And if anyone, if anyone has any questions, feel free to pop in, but otherwise, we'll start off with a five-minute review and then we'll jump into discussion. Okay, I think my at-home DIY timer might have stopped working, so I think we have five minutes. Hopefully you've all had the chance to take a look at the letter. And with that, I think we can move into questions and discussion.
Okay. Um, I invite anybody who wants to pass and know that they want to pass, you can go and drop that in the chat box. I'm going to start reading through a list of names I have here and calling on folks just for the question period. Rose. Pass, pass, okay. Rocky.
Questions pass.
Okay, Lauren, oh, Lauren's gone. Dalton? Okay, Jamie?
I'm not sure if it's a question or a comment, but it's like a question, maybe it's a comment and a question. I don't know. Maybe I'll just ask. Um, I just at the very beginning of the letter, uh, there is a statement that's basically saying that, you know, the, the commission encourages the city council to consider increasing the levy. And my understanding, the last time we talked about this as a full commission was that we were like, we trust that the city staff have, have a very strong reason as to why they've picked that particular number. And that we would say, yes, the need is great. And, and you know, I, I'm okay with the floor versus ceiling analogy sentence. But putting a statement that is explicitly saying, please increase the levy is different than what I remember us landing on last time. So so I'm curious, like, like where that came from or like, did we, did we all come to a conclusion and then I just missed it? Was that something we save for discussion?
I, do you have to? I think we should save it for discussion on this.
The question, the question is, am I recalling that correctly or is that a decision that was made that I somehow missed?
Okay. I think we will, we will circle back to that during the discussion, Jamie. But I appreciate you, uh, asking it as a question. Um. Caleb passed. Julio, do you have questions?
He passed.
Oh, sorry. No, he navigated. Um, okay. Now that we're, I think I don't have any questions and everybody else passed, so now we can move into the comment phase. Um. Rose, do you have any comments?
No.
Nope. Okay. I'm going back to my list. I'm following our procedure to see if, how well it works.
I guess maybe David commented.
Yeah.
I liked the rewrite and the section added about accessibility. I appreciate that.
Rocky? You're good. Okay.
No, I do have, I have a que, I have a comment.
Okay.
I'm putting in the chat just so it's, it's there, but it's just one word, one word choice. Uh, top of page three. Is this the right time for that?
Sure. Yeah.
So it talks about higher development costs and the city should pursue steps to reduce those. And I just added, uh, regulations to, uh, the phrase generated by city policies. Be generated by city policies and regulations. Pretty minor.
Does anybody have any concerns with the addition of that? Things that knows. Okay, thank you, Rocky. Um. Dalton?
Um, yeah, I didn't have any comment.
Okay. Jamie, you're back up. So are you recalling this?
My question still stands to be answered by somebody.
So I can take a pass at sort of where I was coming from in writing it, and then I definitely think it's a good conversation for the group, because I think where we landed was unclear at the end. I don't think you're, um, like remembering incorrectly, Jamie. I, I, well, actually, I think it, it wasn't that the conversation landed on, we're just going to stick with the ceiling, a floor, not a ceiling. No, I think it landed on indecision from my perspective as staff. So I think we, you know, if there's still discomfort with asking for the levy to be increased, that's a good thing to, to well shout today. Unfortunately, kind of, we, we need to come down on one side or the other, in my opinion. Just for the sake of putting it into text. So however we want to phrase it, we should, we should work that out as a group, because we tend to not put a split decision in a letter as a group. So yeah, I guess that's, that's right. I, I heard some folks saying, let's go ahead and say increase. Maybe we're not the ones to worry about public opinion. We should say, um, you know, let's go all, all in on more. And then I heard some other folks saying, let's, um, you know, give credence to the, the decisions of city staff who have, you know, really carefully come to this number. So I think I heard both sides and I think the group still needs to decide, um, what the letter should say.
Thank you. Go, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I'll just note that, um, we aren't missing a few commissioners today. And some of those who are missing were, uh, if I'm remembering correctly, strongly suggesting that we put an ask for more. So, um, and our, our policy or our practice, I won't call it a policy, the commission's practice is that this, you know, decisions need to keep, decisions need to be made on the schedule of our meeting. So if you miss a meeting, as some people are today, you need to respect the decision that's made at the meeting you missed. So this group today, it would be great to come down and decide whether in the letter, there's going to be an explicit ask for more or to revert back to the previous version, which just referenced the, the great need and the need excesses, exceeds the amount and we support the housing levy. Or, but Olivia put it much better than I just did.
Okay. So Jamie, I think you've put out in the sand kind of where your position is, which is to stick with the ceiling and the floor language, but, um, have you thought through any kind of other kind of suggested strike throughs or line edit proposals?
I mean, I don't think I explicitly advocated for any particular position. I was asking for clarification on where we landed, because that was different from what I recalled from our last meeting, which is why I had asked it as a question. Maybe Rose?
Yeah. So, uh, the last meeting was weeks ago. My brain is, but I was wondering, because I feel like we talked about this, but I might be forgetting. Is there a reason why we're not saying something like, we wholeheartedly support the requested amount? And if the, I forget the office involved, but if they feel prudent to ask for more, we would support that too. I don't know. Is that kind of like a, yes, and without being divisive? Because I definitely heard Jamie's concerns last time that to ask for more could be considered divisive and not the right move if we want the full amount to actually approved.
So we have a couple of options on the table. I think that we could strike the language about requesting more, um, and talk about this as just being viewed as a, um, as the floor, not a ceiling for what's needed. There's an option to thread the needle a little bit, which I think Olivia's indicated that she has not she struggled to, um, find a way that doesn't sound wishy-washy or confusing. Oh, go ahead, Jamie.
Rocky has a comment he put in the chat.
Oh, thanks.
Only, only if others are okay with that, I guess, but, um, now I'm talking, so I'll just keep going. Yeah, I mean, I, so my, my recollection was, is we didn't, we didn't want to presuppose that we were smarter than the folks that determined the amount that the levy should be for. And there's lots of polling and other things that go into that. That may have been said earlier. And I'll just say from my point, I would support just striking that, that last sentence of the, uh, the introduction. Just the commission encourages and leave the floor and ceiling language.
Thank you for getting it started with some, something to react to. Um, I'd like to hear from some others who we haven't heard from yet on this issue.
Julio has a comment.
Julio?
His comment for this is a different thread.
Okay. Just keep leaving him out. Julio, are you, um, able to? Are you with us?
Thank you. He might be in a different. Which is why you're not seeing.
Oh, okay. Okay. Julio, we cannot hear you right now. Think Vanessa's going to troubleshoot with you to make sure, see if we can't bring, bring you into the room or bring you into the discussion. Meanwhile. Who else has opinions on this? I'll say I've, I personally struggled to settle for anything less than what, what, what we fully need to meet the need, but I, and balance that kind of like desire for increasing the amount with knowing that there's a significant amount of work that went into settling on this number. So I kind of like Rocky's proposal. I think that leaves a fairly strong enough introduction. And I think that I, I could personally live with removing that sentence. Saying a head nod from Rose. Jamie, how do you feel about that idea?
Um, I'm also a little like, trying not to get frustrated, but we need to pay attention to the chat for virtual folks too, so that we can fully participate in the discussion. Um, so yeah, I, I support Rocky's proposal. I think, I think it's so important that as a commission, we reiterate that yes, the need is great and that this isn't enough to meet the need. But despite that, we're still supportive of the Office of Housing's proposal. So I think, I think our language is, is strong around that.
I will stop looking at the big computer screen and start looking at my own. It's disorienting a little bit. The big screen doesn't show me the chat box. Okay.
And Caleb is in support of, is a plus one to Jamie's comment.
And how about Julio?
Julio is in a different meeting and I just sent him the link to this meeting, which is why I could see the chat, but nobody else could. So hopefully he'll be joining us shortly.
Okay. All right. Well, um, Olivia, I think you have enough direction from us. Um, if anybody feels the need to circle back to that comment before we close out the conversation, we can. Um. Meanwhile, Caleb, do you have any comments?
Not at the moment.
Okay. David?
Oops, no, I don't.
Okay. Um, that leads the, that leads me, I have one minor comment, which is kind of, it's at the very end of the letter where we're talking about some other kind of thoughts and ideas. So it would be on the last page. The second bullet point. And it talks about including language in the levy that encourages family-sized housing units of at least three bedrooms. And I was thinking this could be an opportunity for us to underscore that we could also use more policy tools to encourage and incentivize the creation of family-sized units. And so was thinking to add some language to this that said include language. And then the new language would be and implement new supportive policies that encourage the creation or preservation of affordable family-sized units. So it's both about including language in the levy, but also pushing the city to think about other strategies through policy action that they could take to incentivize that and further make it possible and likely that through policy action that they could take to incentivize that and further make it possible and likely that developers would include those types of units in their projects. Is that creeping too far outside the scope of what we should be saying in this letter? Or is that?
Is that typed? Can you put in?
Yes, I can put that in the chat.
I was just looking.
Not translating.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now on the chat box. Okay, what's okay with that? Any concerns? Okay. And then my other comment, which is super minor is when we're listing in the final bullet around the, the levy's part of a system of funds that includes, and I think we should go ahead and name federal as another source of important funds for affordable housing. And then I did email Olivia earlier today suggesting where possible throughout the letter, we, we find ways to add citations to some of our assertions, just, just to maybe strengthen and, and support some of our comments because I know some research is out there on some of those things.
This is so bad.
What was that doing?
Sorry, nothing.
Oh. Okay. So I know that we've had it. We had a few people that passed. I just want to circle back to folks to see if anything news come up for you. And if you, if you do, feel free to just unmute yourself.
I'll just note that Rocky noted this is a slight stretch, but I still support it. Super important. And I just popped
Thanks for the
the second edit that Michaela proposed in the, in the chat and although Microsoft Teams is a Microsoft product, it doesn't like to copy exactly from Word. So you don't see the strikeout in the underline. So the federal should be underlined as an add and there is no strikeout.
Okay, Jamie supports it. Nobody's speaking up. Rocky said, maybe it's a stretch, but it's okay. Okay. All right. And Olivia, if you feel the need to do any sort of wordsmithing to any of that language, just to make it tighten it up, you're welcome to do that. Okay.
Okay. My stretch comment, well, my stretch comment was for the, the larger sized family units, but the second one I support completely. Both.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for clarifying. Hey. Well, less discussion than I expected on the letter. Olivia, I think that speaks to the quality of the work that you and your colleagues put together on the revisions. I, I know that we were a little bit unclear at the end of the last meeting, which is why I checked out with you at the end because I wasn't exactly sure where we had landed specifically on that, that issue of, of are we asking them to increase it? Or are we sort of trying to be more nuanced in our approach? So thank you for putting something out there for us to react to. We really appreciate it. And so at the next meeting, we will be voting to approve our letter. And I'm very excited. See this one across the finish line. You can't.
And if, if I could just remind everybody, because it's been a little, well, it hasn't been that long since, it's been a month since you all have approved a letter. So our practice is to, at the meeting that we are, that you all are voting to approve or not approve a letter, the practice is to not do significant, not propose significant edits at that time. The only edits that really can be entertained when we are, when you all are approving a letter is like a word insert or a word taken out where everybody agrees because we, you all approve your letters in a somewhat formal way, like you approve your minutes. So there are motion is made to approve. Then is there any discussions or proposals to edit? And then there is a formal vote. So that is why we set aside a fair amount of time at today's meeting to just to make sure there were no other significant changes to the letter. And I think I really appreciate Jamie, you raising the issue because we were unclear at the end of the last meeting. So please be prepared to come to the May 25th meeting, ready to approve the final that will be sent out a week in advance of the meeting. We will also post it on our website 48 hours in advance of the meeting. So on the May 23rd. Thank you.
Hey.
And I'll just say that Julio's still working on joining us, but he was able to send a message through like a Q and A function, which I don't think you all can see. So he just said that his point was addressed by Rocky. So, okay, he's good. Good.
I'm glad he can at least hear us. Great. Um. All right. So that brings us to our next agenda item. 10 minutes ahead of schedule. Woo hoo. Yes. We're going to have a working session now on the comprehensive plan and the Seattle transportation planner review frameworks. Question staff will walk us through the proposed frameworks for our upcoming review of the draft major update to the conference plan, the draft Seattle transportation plan and their associated draft environmental review. These plans are anticipated to be really released in late June. After the staff presentation, I'll facilitate our discussion by asking commissioners for any clarified questions. If you do not have a question, feel free to pass and I'll circle back to you at the end of the questions portion. Following questions will open up the floor for discussion. You can use the chat function to be recognized to speak. So we have an hour for this agenda item. I'm looking at John, but I actually don't know who is the it's you.
Tag on it. So I just wanted to provide a brief introduction before turning it over to Olivia and then John. So in various committees over the last probably two months, we've discussed how to approach the review of the comp plan update, the major update to the comp plan. We have had less discussion around that of the Seattle transportation plan. And both of them are going to land pretty much at the same time, as well as their associated draft environmental impact statement. So those are going to be four significant pieces of work to review. So today, what we're going to do is Olivia will speak to the comp plan framework that we, as I said, discussed in committee a couple of times. And then John will propose a similar framework consistency for the review of the Seattle transportation plan. And then I'll wrap up with a timeline that is, that I should have date stamped because it could change next week. The, the release date of the comp plan has already slipped. It's slipped a couple of times through nobody's fault. And we're now looking at the end of June as Michaela noted. So after Olivia and John make their presentations, I'll talk to the, speak to the timeline. And then at that point, we'll get into Q and A, if, if that makes sense. However, if something is being said that makes absolutely no sense, please put your name in the chat and as it's just all of us together here, we can pause the presentation and entertain questions. With that, I'll turn it over to Olivia.
Great. Okay. So we're going to start off with the comprehensive plan. So as Vanessa mentioned, we've talked about this one a couple of times. I believe back in March, at the March H and N meeting, and also in one of the March executive meetings. We started with a really loose, high level framework that staff pulled together that was pulling themes from past letters and reports over the last couple of years, really. So trying to pull together some common themes that the commission has highlighted recently that are important. And the thinking here was to put them all together in a framework to try to organize the group's review and try to make sure that those themes were carried throughout both the comprehensive plan and the DEIS and making sure that when different folks are reviewing different components, that everyone's kind of keeping the same high level topics in mind. So there was also a request, I believe the last time we discussed this, probably at an exact meeting to take this framework and move it into more of a worksheet format and to take some of the, there's also looking at this framework, there was even more information below some of these bullet points that had gotten pretty detailed. And to take some of those sort of topics and comments and turn them into questions that could help guide folks' review. So that's what we'll take a look at today. We took a pass at that as staff. So on the slide, you're seeing kind of like a screenshot of what the first page, part of the first page of the worksheet could look like. And just a reminder that we're trying to make this as a tool for the group. So as you're looking at it, think of what might make it more useful to you or, you know, is it kind of asking things in a way that's helpful? But also keep in mind that the questions don't have to be your complete review. You know, if you have, all of you have different insights, obviously in different areas of interest and expertise. So we definitely want you to still bring that to your review. The goal is just to make sure that if, you know, we can't all look at every element of the comp plan. Unfortunately, it's going to be a really large draft and there just won't be time. So if perhaps one person's looking at the new climate element, but they don't get the chance to look at the housing element, then you know, folks with different areas of expertise will still bring in these main themes to each element that they're looking at. So you know, this, as you use the worksheet, if you were assigned one or two elements, you could try to fill a worksheet out for each element. There's a little spot there to, you know, to mark down which one you're working on. And then the thinking would be that you would kind of read through each of these questions, respond to the ones that make the most sense, given what element you're working on. And try to sort of fill in your comments based on that. So I'll go through each of the main categories. I won't read all the questions because I'm sure that would just be overwhelming, but I'll give some examples of what they might look like. So in the, for the framework that we had talked about previously, there was a section on race and social equity. And so one of the questions in that section would be, you know, does the element clearly name racist and socially unjust practices and policies past and present? And if not, what's missing? So that would just be a question that you could keep in mind as you're reading through the element, jot down your notes. And the thought would be that you could fill out the worksheet on your own as you go through an initial review, but then as you get back together with your work group, you can use your worksheets to sort of organize your group discussion and help you to summarize with the points that your group comes up with. The next section was on climate and that got broken down into some notes on mitigation versus some notes on climate change preparedness and adaptation. So one of the questions there could be, do the goals and policies, the policies of the elements support city goals of emissions reduction? If not, where might emissions be addressed? Just for example, there was a section on sustainable quality of life and that was broken down into health, safety and resilient communities. And so one of the questions under health is do the goals and policies of the element promote equitable access to open space and or recreation? And if not, how might access to open space and or recreation be addressed? And so as you can imagine, some of these are pretty specific. They might not be completely relevant to the element that you're reviewing. And so, you know, it'd be a matter of using your best judgment, but I think by having these themes in mind, as you look at each element, it'll just keep some of the broader topics on top of mind. And so again, I'm not going to read all of these. I'm happy to come back to any of the questions. And then we also had a section or a theme of anti displacement. So the question there would be, does the element include proactive strategies to prevent and mitigate the impacts of displacement? Consider housing and commercial displacement in all its forms, physical, economic and cultural. And if it doesn't include those, how might such strategies be included in the element? There was also a section or a theme around housing access and choice. And so a question under that category would be, do the, the goals and policies of the element promote more housing choices in more neighborhoods? If not, what is missing? I think that was, yeah. That's it for my high level overview of the comp plan worksheets. And then I'll pass it over to John to share STP. And so again, just as you're thinking about this and before we go into discussion, think about, are these helpful questions? You know, what would you change if anything? Is this too much detail? So just things to keep in mind. And I'll pass it to John.
Okay. So the, we all know the Seattle transportation plan is coming around the same time as the comp plan and with its associated draft environmental impact statement. And we have had several briefings and discussions from S dot over the last year. And then more recently, we've had some internal discussions about how to organize the, the review of the STP, which of course is challenging without knowing exactly what's going in the document. I'd say the STP is a little bit more ambiguous at this point. So we're all really curious what it's going to include and what it's going to look like. But I've started to organize some similar themes and questions based on our discussions at the last few LUT committee meetings. Our last briefing from S dot was in January and actually we had an LUT briefing in January and then at the February LUT, we had a discussion about how we felt about the review of what we were hearing back then. And then in April, we actually had staff from S dot come to the executive committee meeting. And so at the April Land Use Transportation Committee meeting, we talked about what we were hearing and what we were thinking. And so that was really helpful. I've tried to organize a similar framework with, and the benefit of reviewing both at the same time with the commission is some of the same themes. You'll see, for example, race, racial and social equity is one that, that definitely cuts across both plans. Anti displacement is a theme that has come up in, in discussions around the STP also. So I have that in there. But some of the other themes have come out of the discussions from the committee as well as it even goes back to the repurposing the right of way issued brief, some of the themes that came out of, of that product. So just at a very high level, the list is here. It's starting with race, racial and social equity. Transfer, transportation choices is a, a high level theme, access to daily essential needs, safety, climate change and resilience is another one that we are seeing across both plans. Repurposing the right of way as a, as an isolate, as an individual topic. Anti displacement, again, integration with the comprehensive plan. That's a, a, a big one that allows for cross, cross cutting review as well as regional coordination is another topic that has come up. Imagine, if you can imagine a similar worksheet to what Olivia presented, I think that is a great way for individual commissioners to think about how to structure their review. We will most likely have a similar worksheet to send out when we have the plan. Go ahead to the next slide. And I just have some examples of questions for each of these categories. And they are, some of them are similar. So for example, under race and social equity, does the plan address disparities in transportation choices and investments? Does the plan advance anti races outcomes and actions, for example? Things to think about as you're reviewing. Go ahead. Under transportation traces, just a few things. Does the plan support reducing dependence on single occupancy vehicles for many trips? Does the plan prioritize investments in transportation infrastructure that support multimodal alternatives? Does the plan include measurable metrics and performance indicators to track and evaluate its implementation? So a lot of these come out of the discussions that we've had over the last few months. I'm not going to read every one, but keep going. A, a category was recommended for access to daily essential needs. So does the plan promote that in more neighborhoods? Safety? Does the plan promote safe and comfortable transportation options? Does it include strategies to meet the city's Vision Zero goals? Next. Climate change and resilience. Does the plan support the city's climate action plan and emissions production goals? Under repurposing the right of way, does the plan encourage repurposing of the right of way for walkability, people oriented streets, community spaces? And I think just a few more. Anti displacement, very similarly to what Olivia described as, does the plan include proactive does the plan include proactive transportation strategies that prevent and mitigate the impacts of displacement? And then integration with the comp plan, lots of categories. Does the transportation plan, does it include coordination between transportation planning and the comprehensive plan to support population and job growth, housing affordability, transportation and mobility access and public facilities? I think one more. And lastly, the theme of regional coordination has come up. Does the plan consider the regional nature of transportation networks, choices and mobility, and encourage a regional approach to transportation planning? So again, high level things just to think about as we receive the plan and start a review. And of course, we'll have a place for other issues as are identified in the review. Ness, I believe you're up.
All right. I, I get the scary slide. So what you're looking at right now is my attempt to sketch out a visual timeline of our review of the four documents, your review of the documents. So this is definitely a work in progress and we have another six weeks to fine tune it. That's the good news. So assuming a late June release of the plan, I'm proposing that from the time of the release, let's say it's June 30th until July 5th, because I know you all probably don't have any plans over the Fourth of July long weekend, for individual review and to fill out the worksheets that John and Olivia have just reviewed. And then we could use the July 5th. We're going to move the July 4th executive meeting to Wednesday, July 5th. We'll use those, we could use the July 5th exec and the July 6th H and N. As a possible work group time, if individuals have had time to do their individual review. Another option would be issue specific discussion. July 6th through 12th, work groups meet again, compile comments for staff. Then at the July 13th full commission meeting, which luckily is a long meeting or longer than the morning meetings, we would ask for a presentation by OPCD and SDOT on the comp plan and on the STP. And then at the July 18th exec, staff would present a summary of the comp plan work group comments. July 20th LUT, staff would present a summary of the STP work group comments. And then at the July 27th full commission meeting, staff introduce a detailed letter outline for all four bodies of work that we're reviewing. So the comp plan, the STP and the two draft EISs. Then through the month of August, aiming for approving four letters on August 24th. Continuing to discuss the outlines, populate the outlines, review or revise draft at the August 10th full commission meeting based on the discussions held at the August 1 exec and August 3rd H and N. And then at the August 15th and August 17th meetings, that being the exec and LUT, discuss revised comp plan and draft EIS draft letters and discuss the revised STP and draft EIS letters. You'll note that the, it's, it's an all hands on deck situation. I, we in no means expect everybody to be able to attend all of the meetings listed. But rather, if you have specific, first of all, we'll discuss this timeline and if it makes sense and if this approach makes sense. And then once we do come up with sort of a loose agenda for each of the meetings, maybe you're not a member of H and N, but you decide you really want to talk about the comp plan and draft EIS outline and on August 3rd, you participate in the August 3rd H and N. The exec meetings are open to everyone. Leadership is expected and highly encouraged to participate. All commissioners are encouraged to participate. So the idea here is to, to the best of your ability, fully commit to participating in the full commission meetings and the committee you are assigned to and to work in other committee meetings as, as you're interested. Something else that I would just like to propose, and it's a bit tricky and I'm completely open for alternative viewpoints. Given, I mean, 60 days sounds like a long time, but 60 days for four big bodies of work is a really short period of time for a all volunteer body, you all have day jobs to do this work. So I would like to propose that as a group, as we move through 60 days of reviewing these four documents, if you do miss a meeting where decisions are made, I would like to propose that commissioners let those decisions stand as opposed to trying to revisit. So let's say you miss one of the full commission meetings or you miss one of the committee meetings where progress is made and developing the letter. It would help us meet the deadline, the 60 day deadline, if we weren't to spend time in committee or commission meetings revisiting what had been decided at the previous meeting. And I know that's a lot to ask because there's no way I would anticipate all of you being able to attend all. I don't even, I don't even want to count all the meetings. So. Do we have one more slide? Yeah. Before we open it up to questions. And I know I will send out, we will send out this PowerPoint. And I will also send out a different version of the proposed timeline that's just in a different, different people absorb information differently. I'm more of a linear gal, so I have an Excel spreadsheet which I'll send out to you. And Olivia made the fine graphic, which is probably more readable. So.
I know I would work best with a calendar, so maybe you can do that as well. But they're all, yeah, it's a lot of information.
So when, as we've spoken, we spent more time talking about the comp plan approach to the review, our view, our approach to the review of the comp plan. Too many plans and too many reviews. We have not spent as much time on the STP because we don't have a table of contents for the STP as we do for the comp plan. So based on commissioner interest in the various elements, we've come up with this proposal that there be three groups. All groups review the introduction to the comp plan, the growth strategy and the DEIS executive summary, not the whole draft EIS unless you want to dig into that. And then group one would tackle the climate change or the climate resilience. We're not sure what the climate element is going to be called. The environment element, community wellbeing, parks and open space. The number that you see in parentheses after all of those elements listed is the number of pages in the current plan in 2035, just to give an idea. We have no idea if housing will be 22 pages or 11 pages, but it's, all we can work with really is what the current plan is. And so we tried to balance out the interests as well as kind of workload. Group two would review housing and transportation and group three would review land use. This, these groups are definitely not set. I think we can do some rejiggering once the actual plan comes out and we can make sure there's a balance both of interest as well as heft of pages to be reviewed. I'll also note that from a staff perspective, we, the three of us are going to put our heads together, Olivia, John and I, after there's discussion about the commission review and figure out how we're going to divide the, divide the fun amongst us. We have, I would like to propose that actually the staff take the lead on the two draft EISs. Of course, we're more than happy to have you all dig into that as well. But I think it's a lot to ask of you all to review two significant plans and two environmental impact statements. So we will take the lead on getting into the weeds on those to free up your time to dig into the major updates to the comp plan and the STP. So I know that's a lot to take in. I'll turn it back to Michaela to start with questions and just very interested in your reactions. Also completely understand if you want to sit on, think on this and we can discuss at our, at our next meeting. Because we do have six weeks of great anticipation before the plans land.
Wish there was more we could be doing now.
Me too.
Um, okay, so we're going to start with questions and then I'm going to start backwards from my list. So David, you're going to go first for questions.
Uh, my only question is, how are we going to do all this? No, I'm kidding. I don't, I don't have any substantive questions.
Okay. Julia, and welcome, Julia.
Thank you. No, I'm okay. I'm, I've been listening, no questions right now.
Okay. Caleb? No? Okay. Jamie?
Questions?
Dalton?
Question?
Rocky?
I have one question. I am curious, and I apologize if this has come up before in one of our meetings, but how the new state House bills are going to impact what we see? And I know that's the right time for this question or not, but, but I'm very curious.
Sure. I, I can, I can share what Michael Hubner of, at OPC has shared with me. We've, we've actually invited him to a number of meetings, both committee and full commission to address your, that exact question. And he is just, you know, beyond up to his ears in, in getting the draft plan reviewed by the executive as well as the draft EIS. So that said, what he has told me is that Seattle is actually well poised to respond to the housing related bills that came out of the legislature and that Seattle was already kind of thinking along those lines even before. It is helpful to have a state law to be able to point at and say, see, we got to do this. But they were already kind of going down that track. So there, it's, it hasn't kind of completely turned the apple cart upside down. They are, they are working on, you know, ways, they're having to do a little extra work in order to respond to the bills, but they're not having to start all over.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I would say for the rest of the commission, the commission, I assume everyone knows, but I'm going to just say it. One bill in particular, 1110, House bill for cities above 75,000 people, basically allows four units minimum on any lot in Seattle and up to six if you're close to transit. So I, I agree that as I said, we're, we're kind of going that way anyway. But a substantial weight at the state for density. So pretty cool.
Good question.
It's a great question.
Um, Rose?
Yes. My clarifying question, and it's mostly to make sure I heard correctly. So the chapters that I do not see on that chart, staff is planning to do, because honestly, I was kind of excited to do utilities and capital improvements. I mean, they're kind of the backbone of what projects actually happen in the city. And so I don't want us to lose sight of the other chapters. So just for my, my mind, what's happening with the other chapters if they're not on this list?
So definitely up for debate and for discussion. The, the elements that are on this list are those that we are prioritizing. Any commissioner who's, who is passionate about an element that is not on this list is more than welcome to review that and bring that to their work group for discussion. Quite frankly, I'm not sure we have the staff capacity, even though we have three full time staff, which is awesome. I'm not sure we have the capacity to do a thorough review of the entire, all elements. However, if the commission decides to prioritize capital improvements and utilities, then that can be added to the, as I said, this is, this is a working, definitely a work in progress. And I just want to be mindful though of adding more elements is adding more work on the backs of commissioners. So I leave it to you all for, for discussion.
Rose, we're pretty much at the end of the list. I have some questions, but I think we can just discuss that. But I do have a follow up question, I think, to help inform our discussion. Did I miss who was assigned each group?
We have not done that yet. Partially because we've got some commissioners transitioning off and commissioners transitioning in. And we're not sure, so we haven't, we will be bringing that up soon though, because we understand that you probably want to
Yeah.
Get your, get these things on your calendar.
So somebody's answer might be, it's fine if Rose wants to do it. That's my trade comment, but, okay. Um, indeed, the, one of those chapters talks about infrastructure. One of those chapters probably talks about financial investments to support a lot of the implementation of the work. So do others feel like they have the expertise and interest in, in having the commission comment and weigh in on that without added staff support to answer questions? If we have them or to do additional research on it?
I mean, can you clarify what's at the heart of that question? Like what's the concern?
My concern is that we would not be supported. We couldn't really expect a whole lot of support from the staff. And we, we're a group that's really good at generating a lot of questions and our, their staff are really responsive to questions we ask. But I think hearing from Vanessa, Rose can bring that insight into her review of the comp plan, but that we might not be able to get additional staff support if we have follow up questions.
Okay. We will do our best.
Yeah.
And again, if, if the commission wants to reprioritize or add to the list, that is fine. And I guess one way to look at it is in your review of the comp plan, you could choose, prioritize a few elements and dive deeper. Or you could choose to review more elements and maybe not have as deep of a review. That's a possibility. Except in cases where we have a subject matter expert as a commissioner who is passionate and can bring that expertise in.
Can I ask another question? Related.
Yeah.
And have you had a chance to talk to other commissions yet to see what chapters they're focusing on? If any, because I'm wondering if maybe the way to fill the gap is to see if we can spread the load between other city commissions.
I have not yet. I've been, it's on my list to do what, I did want to have a sense of what our plan was before reaching out to different, different commissions and saying, hey, hey, have you heard about the comp plan? And have I got a deal for you? But I will, I will be reaching out.
Any other thoughts on Rose's interest in expanding our reach? I think they stand us with the amount of
I know.
We have ahead of us.
Sorry.
That's a little bit of what I'm struggling with is I don't want to take any of the topics that are in this chart off to make space for that. And that 60 day review timeline, I'm pretty, because I think what we're looking at here doesn't include the STP because you don't know the topics yet. So there's other, the stuff, other themes that we will be assigned as well. So I'm not hearing, I hear on the ground soul of support for it. I'd say if you see something that's super of concern to you, you can always bring it forward. I think that's our prerogative, anytime and always. you can always bring it forward. I think that's our prerogative anytime and always. But, but I, I think maybe whoever's unfortunately going to be assigned to your workgroup is a little reluctant.
And as Olivia noted before, the proposed worksheets that we would love comments back on, Olivia emailed it and John will email it out as, the STP one out as well. Those are just a baseline, those are a floor, not a ceiling. So don't feel restricted. If you have comments that don't fall in in the construct of the worksheet, additional comments are obvious, are very much welcome. The worksheet is really meant to be a tool to help approach the comp plan, which can be a little daunting. And then on this note, I'm also going to put a link to the current plan in the chat. So as you're thinking about reviewing different parts of the comp plan, the current comp plan at least is an example of, it's not going to be exactly the same, but it'll give you a sense of like how thick it is, what level of detail there is, how it's set up. So you might want to familiarize yourself with that in advance of reviewing the draft that's going to come up, come out at the end of June.
Okay. I have two technical questions and then when I'm done, I think we would be moving on to comments. So if anybody wants to tee up their comments or put their name in the queue for comments along with the theme that they want to talk about, feel free. My questions, one, I am aware of the housing appendix being a really substantive body of work. And I think that's where we will see some of our questions answered, particularly on you know, land capacity analysis and the racial, the racial, racially disparate impact analysis work. And so I'm, and I think that's, could be several dozens or hundreds of pages long. So what's our responsibility or what's our, what's your recommendation in terms of us reading appendices associated with the element we've been assigned?
My suggestion would be all commissioners are more than welcome to review the appendices. If the appendices is related to a area of which you are a subject matter expert, such as you, I would certainly encourage you to. I don't feel I can ask commissioners to read all the appendices. They are important. They are technical. Again, I'll be able to report out to you all how we end up divvying up the work. So staff will do a review of the appendices, but will, but will probably have less technical background than some commissioners, if that's your resolve.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. But it makes me feel a little bit more comfortable to know that somebody's read it. And if a question comes up, somebody might be able to say, I think that's somewhere in the appendix or something like that. Okay. And then can you go to the timeline slide?
You really want to see that again?
I am, I'm missing when we see a first draft. I see we see, we review revised drafts on August 10th. But when do we see the first draft?
The first draft is actually not a draft, full draft of letter. It's July 27th, when it's a detailed outline of each of the letters.
Okay.
Which really, it, it will be more substantive. So it won't, I shouldn't end that. It, it won't be wordsmithed. It won't be full paragraphs, but it will be a detailed outline. Really just to get a sense of like, this is what we want to make sure we say. And then we'll spend from July 26th, 27th onward in finessing how we say what we say.
Okay.
Or how you all say what you say.
And in terms of what's needed from commissioners, our homework, we're not writing anything other than the worksheets. Once we submit worksheets on July 12th or 13th, then it moves over to the staff and then the staff start doing the writing and then our role becomes to review, edit and comment.
Yes, and staff is always very appreciative of anybody who wants to do more specific writing.
Okay.
So I feel our role is to take the first crack at what we've heard and then because it's, I think it's easier to respond to something than to kind of come up with it, but that's just my style. So if it is, if a commissioner, if, if a commissioner has a preference of actually generating the content as opposed to responding to the content, I'm more than happy to take that.
August is a notoriously difficult, it's a vacation month for folks in the North West. So I'm just naming that.
Yes, it is.
And I, and I, I feel not just worried for us, but other people who want to try and engage in this. Sorry, now, now I'm providing commentary. Sorry, I'm not following my own rules. But that is how I'm feeling when we get this slide is, oh my goodness. We've got a lot of work ahead of us and I, I just encourage folks to think through and maybe what, what points in this process you really, really, really want to make sure that you have a, an opportunity to shape it and really think about turning your tentative to those committees you don't sit on to yeses if you really want to be there for that discussion. Okay. Sorry.
Oh, that's, I, I appreciate you naming that and I would imagine that you are not going to be the only person to make that. I think individuals and groups beyond the commission will certainly make that observation as well.
Yeah.
And can I just add? You had said the only time that there's writing, that the commissioners, the homework for the commissioners is to complete the worksheets. Between July 6th and July 12th in your workgroups, it would be helpful if the, those, if during your workgroup, there is a commissioner can run point on compiling the worksheets. Where staff is going to do our best to be part of those workgroups as well. So we'll be kind of a backup, but I think that the idea of the worksheets is not only as a tool for review, but also to, to help start to summarize and consolidate comments across commissioners.
Okay.
And if a commissioner on, in a workgroup isn't, is, feels comfortable doing that summary, that would be really helpful to us, the staff.
Did any other questions come up for commissioners while I was getting into the weeds on process? No? Okay. All right. So we'll move into the comment phase. I'm looking for anybody who's raised their hand in the chat box or dropped their name in the chat box. I don't see any. So with that, I will just do an awkward silence, silent pause here to see if anybody wants to unmute themselves and get us going. Oh, Rose?
And this, this goes back to the framework. I think it's a great start. I would like us, and I'd be curious to hear if other commissioners feel the same way. I'd like us to put in the color brave space norms that apply so that we can be as specific as possible. Not just in our meetings, but in our reviews and in the letters to come.
Could those into the, into the worksheets?
Yeah, the worksheets. Yeah.
Great idea. Thank you, Rose.
Yeah, I've filled out some of these worksheets before in different roles. And one of the things that we found helpful were, were examples of what some of the words meant. Just because sometimes people have varying levels of knowledge about what does the word resilience mean to you and what does it mean to me? What is that? What am I looking for when I'm reviewing for that? So the color break norm space is a good way of defining things. I think we have to be careful though about distributing those worksheets outside of our groups because I feel like those color break space norms are copyrighted. Oh no, that's, no, we purchase them.
We purchase them. We pay for them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
We have to wait for them.
Okay. Thank you, Rose. Any other feedback on this, this work that's ahead of us? Or ideas for being more efficient or changes in the process, anything?
I'll just reiterate that these are staff proposals. Certainly based on what we've heard from you all. And we're really very, very interested in your feedback. If you have suggestions, edits, tweaks, these, this approach is not set in stone by any means. And we do have a couple of weeks to fine tune it so that we're ready to go at the end of June.
My only comment is since we don't have a lot of people on the call today, either find a way to bring this back to a future meeting or email it out to people. Just to say this is our latest, this is what we know about the release date. This is our latest thinking on the timeline. Things are subject to change, but make notes. Okay, thanks.
I'll send, I'll do both, both send an email as well as, we will definitely talk, talk about this at a future full commission meeting, maybe, maybe the next one, which is the 25th of May.
Okay. All right. Well, I think folks are ready to go outside. Appreciate everybody's engagement today, but before, so I think we're going to end that agenda item. Do we have anybody here for public comment today?
We do not.
We do not. Okay. All right. Well, then we will skip over public comment. And are we, is there any announcements you want to make before we close out?
No announcements.
Okay. All right. With that, this meeting of the planning commissioners adjourned. Bye, everybody.
Bye all. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Hi, everyone.